Good afternoon and welcome to the Standing Committee meeting for Wednesday, September 6, 2023. All council meetings will continue to be live streamed on the city's website. Our first order of business is roll call with a quick state roll.
Reverend Burgess.
Mr. Coghill.
Here.
Ms. Gross. Mr. Kraus. Mrs. Cal Smith. Ms. Strasburger.
Here.
Ms. Warwick. Mr. Wilson.
Here.
Mr. Lavelle Chair.
Here.
Five members present.
Thank you. Our next order of business is public comment. I would like to remind all speakers that the rules of council state that comments are limited to matters of concern, official action, or deliberation which are maybe before a city council and profanity will not be permitted. After your call, please restate your name, provide your neighborhood for the record. You will be given three minutes to speak. Our first registered speaker, Dr. Ronald Lynn Miller.
Dr. Ronald Lynn Miller, Bell Suver. I am Pitt and Oxford educated in the Global Intelligence Society, U.S. National Candidate for President 2024. I can be reached at CGSIi.rlm.globalintelligence@gmail.com 24/7. I stand for, as I have for nearly 12 years, in 500 public comments, vote for voter verification for whom? Vote by voter verification for whom? Look, India has 700 million voters in a national election. We have 150 million in the last election, and we have a huge amount of trouble. They are the world's greatest democracy at the moment, in my opinion. And I really think that all of you who don't already look at and listen to Paul Kisharma at First Post, you should do it. And uncensored freedom of speech and local government supremacy, LGS, which is clearly a concern of this council. By LGS, I mean, one, without the more than 100,000 local governments in the United States of America, there would be no states. There would be no state governments. There would be no nation, no U.S. national government in Washington, D.C. I believe firmly in the primacy of local government, and that means the council of the city of Pittsburgh. That doesn't mean that I approve of your actions. That's a different question altogether. I disapprove and find unpersuasive a lot of what you do. Number two, without local government meeting public comment, there would be no opportunity to directly speak to individuals claiming to represent them, us, meaning you. There is no opportunity to speak at the moment to state assemblies on the floor in the assembly, for example, in Pennsylvania, no public comment. There is no opportunity to speak in the U.S. House via House public comment. And I think that there should be in both the assemblies across the United States, including in Pennsylvania, and also the House of Representatives. Two to five in a PM on a Friday, what harm would there be using a lottery? And three, without local police access to all buildings in the locality, these police cannot uphold their oath to protect and serve us. It makes them crazy. If someone starts shooting people at the, one, U.S. Cyber Command in Oakland, at the biological, two, Biological Safety Lab, three to four in Oakland, Ms. Strasburger, and three, the supercomputer facility in Oakland, do Pittsburgh police officers have access to one, two, and three to stop and arrest the out of control person? The answer is no. The feds are supposed to be, or think that they're in control of that, and I say that that's a mistake. Our police in Pittsburgh and across the United States should have access to these buildings. Our police are often damned if they do X, and they're damned if they do not.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Naomi Mullen. Saw you come off of mute, Ms. Mullen, but we cannot hear you.
I honor my husband, who was a true public servant from the 1970s until 2021 in Pittsburgh. Shady trees, not shady deals, and Bon Air. This is for you, Michael. The Pennsylvania Constitution is titled "The Declaration of Rights." The entire article is concerned with establishing the principle that the people are the sovereigns, not the states, which would include municipalities and school boards. They shall not harm the people, or they will be held accountable. The city controller, also the school board, city school controller, is the fiscal watchdog for the citizens of Pittsburgh. It is the job of the controller to protect city tax dollars from waste, fraud, and abuse. Waste of thousands of dollars per month is occurring with Bon Air School. Fraud was perpetrated with the claim of community support for the sale of the building to a developer. Abuse is occurring due to the threat of blockbusting and intentional infliction of distress. Why won't the city controller advocate for we, the people who have been harmed by this detrimental building? Who does he serve? It is no wonder that issues with the school district persist. Checks and balances do not exist when the same person is the controller for both the city and the Pittsburgh Public Schools. Is that a conflict of interest? The Pittsburgh Public Schools stated WHO guidance when it closed the schools for months. The WHO is an unelected, diplomatically immune, tax-exempt group. Eighty-four percent of what funding for it is from external commercial sources. The Bill and Melinda Gates Foundation is an example of billions being given to fund their personal agenda. Sweden and Florida are two examples of superiority of business and educational outcome. StopTheWHO.com. No more global mayors or global Pittsburgh Public Schools decisions. StopTheWHO.com. ExitTheWHO.com. ScrewTheWHO.com. Shady trees, not shady deals, and Bon Air. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Chief Ikana.
Currently on mute. Greetings. My title is Chief Ikana, the chief of the Aroqua Confederacy of Aborigine American People. My apologies for not making it to council this morning at 10:00 a.m. Instead, I chose to attend the funeral of Honorable Bill Hardison, who died during a slot situation that could have been handled much differently. Regardless of what accusations or infractions, he did not deserve to die. I find it very terrible that there's two justice systems working in the city of Pittsburgh, one for European people, the other for non-European people. However, the supreme law of the land is supposed to apply equitably to everyone, but for some strange reason, when the officers' lives that were taken in Stanton Heights, the gentleman who took their lives were the Europeans. He killed three officers. I want to reiterate, he killed three officers in Stanton Heights. Yet, he was able to get his day in court. And I want to reiterate, and I want these words to echo throughout those chambers, that Bill should have gotten his day in court. Now, what also has been revealed is that some of these officers, perhaps many of them, hasn't come out yet, only on the sheriff's level, which is the responsibility of Allegheny County, and I do understand that. However, I think the scope and the test results of the other officers, whether they be federal, state, or local, they should have all been drug tested, and I'm pretty sure we'll find some other sour apples in that bunch. We're tired of seeing things we shall overcome in order to get fairness and equity and equality in this justice system. You want us to follow the rules. You want the people to follow the rules. You want your citizens to follow the rules, but what about your own? How will they be held accountable for not following protocol? How will you deal with them? How will you discipline them in your executive branch of government? Specifically, the mayor, for you are the chief of those police officers. You're the supreme leader of those officers. How will they be disciplined? What did you stand to learn from what happened today? Will it still continue to be business as usual? Or will you say or place value on a human life regardless of their infraction? Bill should be alive and have a day in court. But instead, he's gone and left his family and close friends and comrades to mourn his
Thank you. Our next speaker is Chief Poma Chakman-Yahelihi.
And let heck allocate me, the light of me honors the light of you. I am the chief of medicine for the Aroqua Confederacy of Aborigine American People. And I come to you today in the light of all of the disastrous things that continue to happen to our people on our own land, in our own home, that there's an obligation that city council and all of its members have taken, and that is to uphold the Constitution. And your oath shall be held over your head like a mantle, because this is the oath you chose to take with full wear, understanding, and knowing that you can be held accountable if you violate that oath. And as it relates to our people, Aborigines of America, Article 1, Section 2, Clause 3, and excluding Indians not taxed, our rights are being trampled, our rights are being ignored. And we are, in this city, the most marginalized people here. It is unlawful, and it's not right. And now's an opportunity to do the right thing, as we assisted your ancestors, as I said before, in learning how to cultivate food on our lands, in learning our soil, and teaching you how to survive our winters and our climate changes and the likes, and so on, and so on. Your police officers are ill-equipped to patrol our streets. They are ill-equipped because they've taken over to a Constitution that they have no understanding of, and that is problematic. They must be trained. I've had incidents with your officers, and I have successfully had conversations with the lieutenants to have them stand down. That doesn't happen all the time. That was a fortunate time for me, that one time. Still, nonetheless, I've had the police violate my rights and steal my automobile and accuse me of summary offenses, so that I had to challenge the jurisdiction in traffic court. And I challenged the jurisdiction in the Commonwealth Court, and I was victorious, because the courts will answer accordingly in relationship to the Constitution. Will you do the same? Or will it have to end up that your oaths of offices, if you violate them, when it comes to our rights, will be taken to the level of justice? I say no. I say let's talk and meet at the peace talks table like we've extended our hands to you, and as we have legislation that is presented before you to protect the rights of indigenous people, do the right thing as you protect the rights of the LGBTQ people, you protect the rights of various other groups. And we're saying protect our rights as well, so there is no more bloodshed on our land, and that our future posterity will not have to fear being who they are, the Aborigines of America, Article 1, Section 2, fostering and excluding Indians not taxed. I yield.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Chief Bianca. I don't believe Chief Bianca is with us. That takes us to Martha Isler, whom spoke earlier, but I do not believe is with us. That takes us to Sisti Millsap-L.
It's Tom. Am I able to be heard?
Yes, we can hear you.
I am Sister D. Millsap-L, known as Energy in its neck of the woods. As an originally woman of the land, I have been moved to speak at this proceeding to voice not support and acknowledgement of the rights of indigenous people that the Obama administration adopted by signing into, onto, the United Nations Rights of Indigenous People. Many administrations passed on signing it for the United States and the Union States to adopt. However, I was made aware of it 10 years ago, and I have yet to see any municipal employee to support that document. It was an unfortunate passing of Brother Bill, to which I was made aware of maybe in its fifth hour. When the call came to me, and the individual turned their phone around to their TV screen so I could see what was going on, I was moved to call the Sheriff's Department and let it be known that it was Sister D. Millsap-L that was willing to come and speak with my brother, to allow him to know that it was okay and we are still here for you. And then I was instructed to call 911 because the Sheriff's Department claimed that there was nothing that they could do. So I called the 911 dispatch, and they took my information down and my contact information, and I never received a call. We are willing to support each other as we support all commercial acts on our land. However, when it comes to the support of us originally women, men, and children, we have no support outside of our own. You've heard indigenous, you've heard Indian, you hear origine, we're autogenous. We are the origine of this land, and not just here in the Americas, but all over the world. We're not seeking to overthrow government. We are enforcing these laws, and we're watching them being violated by those who've taken oaths to their Constitution, oath to protect and serve, oath to do what is already written, the contracts that's already laid before us. But as soon as we speak out, then there's something wrong with us. So I agree with Chief Al Mckenna. And there should be some testing done on those municipal employees overstepping their jurisdiction, overstepping their authority. There should be some training and more sit downs at the table as Chief Poma, so eloquently put. I'm not going to take up the three minutes. I yield the floor.
Thank you. Our last registered speaker is Dorissa King. Is Dorissa King with us? She's not online. If not, that exhausts our list of registered speakers. If there's anyone in chambers wishing to speak, please come forward at this time. Anyone in chambers? Seeing none, that takes us to our Standing Committee agenda. Our first committee of the day is Finance and Law, which is chaired by myself. We have one deferred paper, Bill 1072.
Bill 2022-1072, ordinance amending the Pittsburgh Code of Ordinances Title V, Traffic, Article 7, Parking by Creating a New Chapter 550, Lawrenceville Mobility Enhancement District.
I have a motion to hold for a public pending hearing.
For a public hearing?
Yes. I think it was on your schedule, if you scheduled it.
The councilwoman previously called for the public hearing for this?
I would have to check back. I'm not sure.
I think she told me it was on the schedule, but I'm not sure. So either way, we got to hold it for public hearing.
Okay. Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, the bill be held for a public hearing. That takes us to Bill, want to read these together?
No.
Okay. That take, hmm? That takes us to Bill 1834.
Bill 1834, ordinance amending and supplementing the Pittsburgh Code of Ordinances Title 1, Administrative, Article 7, Procedures, Chapter 161, Contracts, Section 161.02, Competitive Bidding, Exceptions, 161.02a, Award of Professional Services Agreements, and 161.02b, Exemptions from Competitive Process to amend the approval processes for professional services, agreements and exemptions from the same.
Motion to hold for six weeks.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, the bill be held for six weeks. I was ahead of myself. It's now Bill 1842 and 1843, which just wants to like these two read together. Yes, Madam Clerk?
Bill 1842, ordinance amending Title VI, Conduct, Article 1, Rights and Actions by Creating a New Chapter 620e, Protection of Gender Affirming Care Services Providers from Out-of-State Investigation or Prosecution from Legal, Providing Legal Gender Affirming Care, and Bill 1843, ordinance amending the Pittsburgh City Code Title VI, Conduct, Article 1, Regulated Rights and Actions, Chapter 603, Enforcement Limitations Regarding Bans of Certain Reproductive Healthcare Services by Creating a New Chapter 603a, Enforcement Limitations Regarding Bans of Certain Gender Affirming Healthcare Services.
Motion to approve discussion.
Second. Like in discussion, Councilwoman?
Yeah, so I just wanted to just speak a little bit to these two bills. The first one, well, I'll start by saying that 20 states have introduced legislation criminalizing gender-affirming care, and those include Ohio and Michigan, which are, you know, our neighbors. And 26 states have restricted gender-affirming care for minors and/or adults, including West Virginia and Kentucky. So that's sort of where this comes out of. So the first, the first ordinance would protect those involved in gender-affirming care from any type of prosecution from out of state. And then the second one, should gender-affirming care ever become illegal, either in the United States or in the state of Pennsylvania, it would deprioritize the enforcement of prosecution for that. So I think it's pretty clear, sort of in a nutshell, but what I really wanted to do is give credit where credit is due. So first of all, Councilman Wilson, this legislation is built off of your legislation, doing the same thing for reproductive healthcare. So thank you for that legislation, and then also, you know, just it ended up being very handy in this case. And then also to my staff, because they, you know, Brooke Christie and our legal staff, because they're the ones who brought this to me and said, hey, you know, this is something we should do. And, you know, that's, that's sort of the great part of, you know, working on city council and being on city council and getting to do things like this that, that help people and feel fairly simple, but, you know, hopefully have a significant impact, so. I don't know if anyone else has comments or questions?
I just want to commend Councilwoman Warwick for working on this, and I appreciate the kind words as well, but just in that, in the, you know, after the Dobbs decision, you know, this council acted swiftly to, you know, put these bills down, the bills at the time. And just like those ones, this one, these as well, leave, you know, healthcare between a, the doctor and the individual. So I think this is very important, and I'm happy to be, you know, slightly a part of this. Thanks.
Any further discussion? If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, both bills receive an affirmative recommendation. That takes us to Bill 1855.
Bill 1855, Resolution Providing for the Issuance of a Warrant in Favor of the Regional Opportunity Center, Doing Business as Vibrant Pittsburgh, in an Amount of $50,000 for Annual Membership Dues.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, affirmative recommendation. Bill 1856.
Bill 1856, Resolution Further Amending, Resolution Number 723 of 2022, Effective December 27, 2022, as amended and titled. Resolution Adopting and Approving the 2023 Capital Budget, the 2023 Community Development Program, and the 2023 through 2028 Capital Improvement Program by Increasing Calera Street Bridge by $322,000 and California Avenue Bridge by $220,000.
Motion to approve discussion.
Second.
Councilwoman?
If you don't mind, the, Mr. Scalikan to the table. Imagine you've been here for a little bit, but you know the drill.
Jeff Scalikan, Deputy Director, Acting Director for DOMI. This resolution is for us to go into contract with the engineer firm to start the preliminary engineering of these two bridges. So we did pick a consultant, and this is to start out the engineering process of it.
Just to be clear, the California Avenue Bridge is the, it's also known as, I just want to confirm the name, because there's a couple different California Avenue bridges.
This is the one that we use more as the technical term. This, we use California. It's in our reports and everything like that, California.
Okay, this is above Woods Run Avenue?
Yes.
Or, I'm sorry, McClure?
Yes.
Okay. I think it's like, there's some name attached to it. I can't remember the guy's name. Regardless, this bridge is now in District 6, so it's in Councilman Lavelle's district. It used to be in my district before we districting. I pledged to the community that is connected to this bridge, Brighton Heights, that I would stay on top of this and see what's happening. And I currently see a lot of different construction happening right now. Could you, could you walk us through that?
Sure.
I think the mic is a little...
Sorry, it's like behind. So the construction that's going on is all capital dollars things. That's, so that's city dollars that we're working on that says for construction, for the actual project to keep the bridge maintenance and maintaining it effectively, so we could keep the bridge open. This money right here, this is federal and state dollars with a 5% local portion. That's for the big overhaul of the project, of the bridge.
So this initial, the capital dollar is going to be being spent already?
Correct.
To put...
100% city.
Yeah. Could you walk us through what's happening there?
Sure. I have to get more of the technical...
And if it's related to the, are we reacting to the, or are we following through?
We're following up.
With that bridge study that was done?
Yes.
The analysis that was done by the outside engineering company?
The one from WSP?
Yes.
Yes. A lot of this is from WSP. It's a consultant that we had on board to help us identify issues that this bridge has. And like I said, that is all being done with 100% local. This, the whole overhaul is going to be federal and state and local dollars, since it's a high-dollar amount.
So it's, it's no secret that this bridge looks pretty bad to look at, because you can visibly see rust everywhere, but the rating was always, you know, slightly higher than other ones that didn't look as bad. So it's obvious that, you know, it's in need of repair, but specifically like, because I'm just trying to understand in larger, what, how we're, you know, following up on that study. What specifically, just what are some specifics that we're doing here? Like I saw, I drove over it, and I saw some people, they had like the big foam pieces that they're sticking in?
Right.
To the, to the expansion joints?
For that part of the project, I'll have to have our, our bridge engineer get back to you on that specific for that part. I'm not too sure what they're working on currently.
Okay, so that's obviously, that's also an outside, that's, that's good. It's also an outside contractor.
Correct.
And I could be getting, my memory could be, you know, going, but I thought I remember there was going to be a crew that we hired to do some of this maintenance work?
Yeah, it's something that we're working on now, is to have an in-house crew to be able to do a lot of this fixes in-house, so we don't have to hire a contractor using capital budget money. This way, we could do it internally and send our staff out to do the work.
So in that follow-up, could you also tell me if what I'm seeing there, the work that's being done there?
Sure.
Would eventually be done by a crew that we have? Would eventually be done by a crew that we have internally?
Yep.
All right, thanks.
Thank you, Councilwoman Warwick.
Um, yeah, just so for the Calera Street Bridge, just to confirm, that's, uh, that's over Streets Run Road in Hayes, correct?
That's correct.
And, uh, what, what is the timeline there? Cuz I know that bridge is so deteriorated. It's a little hairy to drive across.
Um, as soon as we have this consultant on board, we'll be able to have more of a schedule?
Okay.
For you, but we won't even have a, we don't, we're not gonna get that far yet in this?
Okay.
In the process yet, but as soon as we have that, we will get back to you.
Okay, well, anyway, I'm glad that's happening, so.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, affirmative recommendation. That takes us to Bill eighteen sixty-six.
Bill eighteen sixty-six, ordinance amending Title Six Conduct Article Five Discrimination. Chapter six fifty-nine Unlawful Practices, six fifty-nine point oh three Unlawful Housing Practices. In order to provide protections to homeowners from solicitation and related problems, all under certain terms and conditions.
I think Mr. Chair, if you could read eighteen sixty-seven with it, companions.
Bill eighteen sixty-seven, ordinance amending Title Six Conduct Article One Regulated Rights and Actions by adding a new chapter entitled Residential Property Wholesalers to regulate the solicitation of purchases of real property and require certain disclosures of property purchasers to homeowners.
Motion to hold both bills for a post-agenda.
We can't, we gotta wait for Councilwoman Warwick to come back.
Steve?
Yeah.
Do we also have to hold it for?
Uh, for, for public hearing?
No, 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 but do we have to hold it for a week beyond, like, hold it for a discreet amount of time, or?
We can, she can hold it for a post-agenda.
And then after that?
And then work with the clerk to get it scheduled.
Got it, got it, okay.
She's back. Motion to hold bills eight sixty, eighteen sixty-six and eighteen sixty-seven, uh, for post-agenda.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, we'll work with the clerk to get that scheduled. Need a motion to approve the invoices.
To move.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, I'm abstaining. Um, invoices are approved. I'm being reimbursed, so you can't vote on your own benefit. Um, need a motion to approve the transfers.
To move.
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, transfers are approved. Need a motion to approve the P cards.
To move.
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, P cards are approved. That takes us to Public Safety and Wellness Committee chaired by Councilman Coghill. We have one new paper, Bill eighteen forty-four.
Bill eighteen forty-four, resolution amending Resolution number three seventeen of two thousand and twenty-one authorizing the mayor and director of public safety to enter on behalf of the city of Pittsburgh into an amended agreement or agreements with Pervis Systems for installation of a new fire station alerting system and related support services by increasing the approved amount by six hundred and thirty-four thousand, seven hundred dollars for an amended total cost not to exceed three million, three hundred ninety-eight thousand, five hundred twenty-seven dollars and fifty-one cents over ten years.
Motion to approve, brief discussion.
Second.
I actually don't have any questions, but I thought maybe some other members may.
Councilwoman Shawpsberger?
Well, I, so I see here in the text that this is, this really amounts to, um, going from about a hundred and fifty here or there thousand per year to, in a two-hundred range per year, um, adding up to about three-point-three million over ten years. I guess, um, I'd like to, I, I just like, would like to learn a little bit more about, um, why there's an increase and, and what this provides for us. If that can be answered.
I don't see anyone from public safety. Let me check online.
Wait, could we possibly try to get someone here and return to it at the end of the meeting? I don't wanna hold it up, but...
Sure.
Or calling in?
Okay, we'll leave it open on the table?
Thank you.
Come back to it? That will take us to Public Works and Infrastructure Committee, which is chaired by Councilman Kraus. Our first new paper is Bill eighteen fifty-one.
Bill eighteen fifty-one, resolution providing for an amended reimbursement agreement or agreements with the Pennsylvania Department of Transportation for costs associated with the preliminary design phase of the Calera Street Bridge Project, providing for the payment of the costs thereof not to exceed six hundred and thirty-four thousand dollars. An increase of three hundred and twenty-two thousand dollars from a previously executed agreement. This resolution serves to authorize only the amended reimbursement agreement or agreements at no cost to the city. Future resolutions will authorize the project-specific service agreements.
Who's up?
Motion.
Bruce, but I don't think he's here.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, affirmative recommendation. Bill eighteen fifty-two.
Bill eighteen fifty-two, resolution providing for an amended reimbursement agreement or agreements with the Pennsylvania Department of Transportation for costs associated with the preliminary design phase of the California Avenue Bridge Project, providing for the payment of the costs thereof not to exceed one million, twenty thousand dollars. An increase of two hundred and twenty thousand dollars from a previously executed agreement. This resolution serves to authorize only the amended reimbursement agreement or agreements at no cost to the city. Future resolutions will authorize the project-specific service agreements.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Question? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, affirmative recommendation. Bill eighteen fifty-three.
Bill eighteen fifty-three, resolution authorizing the mayor and the director of the Department of Mobility and Infrastructure to apply for a grant from the Pennsylvania Department of Community and Economic Development's Multimodal Transportation Fund for the Critical SAD Walks Improvement Project and further providing for an agreement and expenditures not to exceed nine hundred seventy thousand, fifty-two dollars and seventy-seven cent.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Any discussion? Councilwoman Warwick?
Um, I just have a quick question, I guess for folks here, I don't know if, uh, so, so this is a resolution authorizing the application for a grant. And, um, we had spoken, I don't know, at some point about, um, about the need for us to be able to see what kinds of grants we were applying for. And, and, um, my team is looking into some legislation to, at any rate, to require that. So I just wanted to ask about why these grants are coming, or do, do all grants come to us? Like, what is the protocol, I guess, for grants? Just so that I can understand it better. Cuz if we don't need legislation, then...
Interrogative?
Yeah.
I think they all, they all come, I mean, anything that has to, you know, be authorized, um, like a grant will come to us, now whether or not they've already applied for it.
Oh, yeah.
Just saying whether or not it's already been applied for, it's happened in the past. With, with, you know, not just, at any administrations. I don't even know if it's happened with this administration, but definitely it's happened before.
Right, cuz the concern has been that grants have been applied for, right, sorry. We've been asked to approve accepting grants that have already been applied for, and then when it comes to like, well, what is this? Do we need it? Why did we apply for this? You know, those questions sort of seem like they all should have been answered long ago.
Yeah, similar to like the warrant that we paid, you know, last, last week with the, um, the training, the firearm training?
Oh, okay.
Like, I guess I, but anyway, yeah, your question's valid.
Go ahead.
Pete McDavid, Council Budget Director. So there's a couple of circumstances where we'll get legislation asking council for approval to apply for a grant, and it's, in this circumstance, that's part of the application that you need. The city needs approval from the council body to complete the application. The other instance is whenever there is, uh, money attached to the grant that the city, like matching funds from the city. So that would be council attributing those dollars specifically to that grant. So those are the two circumstances that it would always come before council. But if it doesn't require council approval first, if there's no city dollars attached to it, then a lot of times the grants office and O M B will just fill out the application on their own. And then whenever it, it gets approved by the state, then in order to enter into that grant agreement, they need approval from council.
Got it. Okay, thanks.
Oh. You mentioned that if it's not city dollars involved in the grant, so you're referencing, uh, matching grants?
So if, if there isn't any matching money, then, um, and it's not required in the grant application, then they technically don't need to come before council to get approval to just submit for the application.
That's interesting. I mean, do you have an, do you have an example off, off the top of your head that where you've seen that?
Not off the top of my head. I can't think of something specifically.
I like those top-of-the-head things, so. Um, but anyway, I'm interested in that, too.
Yeah, I mean, I know that with the, the, for example, I think it was one with Operation Better Block for the, I mean, there was just like, what is this grant? Why did we apply for, you know, I mean, it's a good grant, but...
There's a lot of public safety grants that come through that is specifically like the state or, or some, uh, other entity will give money just for the police department to do the specific kind of training or to provide some kind of training. And there's no money coming from the general fund.
But that usually comes across, I think I've seen...
It will upon the approval of it.
But you're saying it technically doesn't have to.
Yeah, not during the application process, it doesn't have to. It's always good to have those open lines of communication with the administration, though.
Further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, affirmative recommendation. That takes us to Bill eighteen fifty-four.
Bill eighteen fifty-four, resolution authorizing the mayor and the director of the Department of Mobility and Infrastructure to apply for a grant from the Pennsylvania Department of Community and Economic Development's Multimodal Transportation Fund for the Second Avenue Connector Project and further providing for an agreement and expenditures not to exceed one hundred forty-eight thousand, two hundred ninety-five dollars and one cent.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Question? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, affirmative recommendation. That takes us to Land Use Economic Development Committee, which is chaired by Councilman Wilson. We have one deferred paper, Bill sixteen sixty-five.
Bill sixteen sixty-five, ordinance amending the Pittsburgh Code Title Nine Zoning Article Two Base Zoning District Chapter nine oh five point oh four Riverfront Districts to add fresh food access as a performance point option.
Motion to approve discussion?
Second.
Second discussion, Councilman?
Uh, do we have someone from, uh, planning or zoning to come in just to discuss the bill quickly?
Uh, it's Kate Rakus. I'm a principal planner of zoning and development review.
Thanks for coming up.
Mm-hmm.
I just had, uh, some questions about this. So the, um, if you could just give us a rundown as to what this would do?
Sure. Uh, so we have, uh, built into the zoning code what we call our performance point system. And the idea in certain districts, it started in Uptown, uh, and then we expanded it to the RIV and then into Oakland this past year. The idea is that you can get, uh, density bonuses, uh, for certain projects um, above sort of the base height minimum if you do, again, if you sort of pick and choose from these performance points menus of different sort of community-identified goals. So there are things like, um, preserving historic structures, providing affordable housing, doing, going above and behind, beyond for stormwater management. So when we did the new base zoning districts in Oakland this past year, uh, one of the community goals was a grocery store. And we added in this performance point just to those base zoning districts that would incentivize a developer to put in a fresh food grocery store. So there are requirements in the code, um, for the fresh food grocery store that actually, you know, can't just be a bodega. It has to have a minimum size. It actually has to sell fresh meat, fresh produce, that sort of thing. Uh, and it can't be located within another, you know, can't be, um, right next to, um, another grocery store. So it has to be, the idea is that we're sort of incentivizing developers um, to provide fresh food, um, i- in areas that otherwise we'd consider like a food desert. Um, so when we first rolled this out, it was just for, for the new base zoning districts in Oakland. Uh, so we do also have, we also use the performance point system in the RIV, the Riverfront Zoning District. So this amendment would allow, um, that performance point to be used in the Riverfront Zoning District, so other areas of the city, um, developers could use that to get a density bonus, um, if they provided that as, as a part of their development.
So what type of fresh food store would have to, would have to be? Like, is there a square foot?
There's a square footage, yeah. And again, then there's also square foot, so there's a minimum square footage, um, for the actual grocery store. And then there's a percentage of the grocery store that has to, um, actually has to sell fresh fruit in, in groceries. Um, and it was based, uh, the language that was based on was based on a, uh, a code in Philadelphia that tries to incentivize the same thing.
And how high could someone build if they have a grocery store?
So it depends on the different, um, different, uh...
All the other points that they...
All the other points, yeah. So in it, it, the different points are different in the different zoning districts. So in the new base zoning districts, uh, one point is fifteen feet, I believe. It is also fifteen feet in, uh, Uptown, in the Uptown Eco-Innovation District, and then it's ten feet in the RIV, I believe.
So if there's no other points involved, they're just like, we're gonna do a grocery store, they're gonna get one?
Extra story, yeah.
Extra story. Do we have any, um, any areas where is already being, like, some developers are already looking at this?
Um, we did have an application in the, um, in the U C M U in Oakland, um, but that development didn't go ahead. Um, we are, we do have an application right now for the, um, Esplanade Development. That's just a master development plan, so it's not at the point where they're actually, um, you know, we don't have any, any zoning applications for that site yet. Um, but they are, um, this is a question that they've asked us would be, you know, would this be a bonus point that they would be available to use? And so, um, that's part of why it's here today.
All right, thanks.
And Coghill?
That's me. I'm just curious, what kind of, uh, what kind of incentives do we give them? Is it a tax break? I mean, what?
It's, uh, additional height on the building. Yep, so density.
Oh, additional height?
Mm-hmm.
To what they're proposing to build?
Mm, yeah. So, uh, each of these zoning districts that had, that utilizes the performance point, um, has a base height, and then it has a maximum height with a bonus point. So, and again, it's different in each of the different zoning districts. Some, one bonus point gets you, um, fifteen feet, in other districts it's ten. Um, but yeah, so then you can, there's, there's an understanding, there's an expectation of sort of what that maximum is. But yeah, each point gets you, you know, sort of an additional story towards that maximum.
Does that height allowance, does that, is that structured like that because the, it's idealistic that the grocery store's on the bottom floor, or is it just, uh?
It's just the density bonus in general, yeah. Again, the idea is that it's this sort of menu of performance points of things that we, that have identified, and like, this was something that came out of the Oakland Community Plan that they'd like to incentivize. So yeah, it's just sort of...
So the grocery store can be in a separate structure than whatever incentive they're getting for height requirement?
Generally, it would need to be in the same structure as the, um, that they would get a bonus point for.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Any further discussion? If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, affirmative recommendation. That takes us to Innovation, Performance, Asset Management and Technology Committee, which is chaired by Councilwoman Warwick. Our first new paper is Bill eighteen fifty-seven.
Bill eighteen fifty-seven, resolution authorizing the mayor and the director of the Department of Innovation and Performance to enter into a fellowship participation agreement and/or agreements with Coro Pittsburgh at a cost not to exceed eighteen thousand dollars over three years.
Motion to approve, brief discussion?
Second.
Uh, yeah, so this is just, uh, to enable Coro Fellowship, um, Coro Fellows, Fellows to, uh, work in IMP temporarily. So I don't know if anyone has questions?
Further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, affirmative recommendation. Bill eighteen fifty-eight.
Bill eighteen fifty-eight, resolution amending Resolution number three thirty-five of two thousand and twenty-two authorizing the mayor and the directors of the Departments of Innovation and Performance and Public Safety on behalf of the city of Pittsburgh to enter into an agreement or agreements and amendments thereto with OST Inc. As needed to fulfill a number of critical I T and device-related projects related to database management and migration and software development to replace key systems by increasing the terms and authorize not to exceed amount by one hundred and eighty thousand dollars for a total cost not to exceed four hundred and twenty-six thousand, three hundred forty-six dollars and two cents for a term of up to three years.
Motion to approve, brief discussion?
Second.
So again, this is, uh, an existing contract, and my understanding is that this money was already budgeted, but some, was not added to the contract, so this is just adding it on.
Thank you. You know how long the contract is? Just curious.
Uh...
Three years?
Three years, yeah. Oh, three years.
Okay. Thank you. Any further discussion? Councilman Schlossberger?
I hate to ask. It's a very, um, comprehensive title, but I, I am curious what these, so, related to database management, migration, software. I guess that answers the question, but is there anything beyond that to describe what these kind of key systems are?
Yeah.
And critical, like, critical I T and device-related projects. Is there any further explanation of what these, 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 the, the critical I T is that we should be aware of?
Like Heidi.
Yes. Would you mind just very briefly describing what this is? I know we often get questions about, um, what kind of, um, what kind of, um, infrastructure and kind of, uh, you know, um, technology we're investing in. So I just wanted to be very precise and understand myself what we're investing in.
Good morning. Heidi Norman, Director of Innovation and Performance. And I have with me, uh, Dr. Chris Pulasko, who is the Chief Data Officer and Senior Manager for Data Services. Um, so the contract is to augment my staff with high-tech people who offer skills that my staff simply do not have, such as database administration, um, and helping us to set up various software and database, uh, databases for the use of the city. I'll, I'll leave it to Chris to explain specifically what we have them working on now. Cause over time it, it changes depending on what our needs are.
Yeah. Um, Chris Pulasko, Department of Innovation and Performance. Um, what we typically need are resources to help us manage backend databases for applications. So an application, like you'll see the, the web interface of that or the software interface, but it's talking to a database that lives on one of our servers. And so we have a good number of servers and many databases that live on those. And keeping those backed up on a refresh schedule, like, you know, it's within the life cycle of the supported software that, that they're, they're running to be able to be a database, um, you know, the age of that. Uh, we, we need help with those sorts of things. And we had recruited for them via staff and weren't able to hire, like we didn't get successful searches. So that was the time when we started to look for staff og for those sorts of things.
Great.
Yeah. We typically do it part-time. They, you know, the current, uh, employee or staff og is like local to the region, but not necessarily the, the city limits. And they're, they're really helpful. They come down every once in a while to come do work for us. So they, I mean, they've been extraordinarily helpful. Um, it's a, it's a way of augmenting our staff with, you know, a, a part-time resource that can handle this or that, that allows us to be able to do things that we couldn't otherwise do.
Understood. Well, I appreciate the explanation. That makes sense. Staff is, as infrastructure, it sounds like. Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Affirmative recommendation.
Thank you.
Thanks, guys.
I hope you're enjoying your new microphones. They're great.
Uh, that takes us to Intergovernmental Educational Affairs Committee, which is chaired by Councilman Gross. Uh, first new paper is Bill eighteen forty-one.
Bill eighteen forty-one, resolution requesting the approval of an inter-municipal transfer of a liquor license from Mac and Toes Inc., located at three thirty-five East Main Street, Carnegie, PA, to the applicant, to the applicant Amboy Restaurants of Pittsburgh LLC, doing business as Amboy Eatery, located at four hundred East Ohio Street pursuant to amended Pennsylvania Liquor Code four dash four six one.
Motion to hold for public hearing.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Bill be held for public hearing, cable cast public hearing. Now Bill eighteen forty-seven.
Bill eighteen forty-seven, resolution adopting plan revision to the city of Pittsburgh's official sewage facilities plan for the city of Pittsburgh Department of Public Works Project Lincoln Place Combined Safety Facility, twelve oh one Mifflin Road, located at Lotten Block one eighty-four E eighty, at no cost to the city.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Any, any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Affirmative recommendation. Bill eighteen forty-eight.
Bill eighteen forty-eight, resolution adopting plan revision to the city of Pittsburgh's official sewage facilities plan for the University of Pittsburgh Gene and Cell Therapy Project, Lot eighteen of Hazelwood Green, PLDP, at no cost to the city.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Question? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Affirmative recommendation. Bill eighteen forty-nine.
Bill eighteen forty-nine, resolution adopting plan revision to the city of Pittsburgh's official sewage facilities plan for the six thirtieth street project, which will involve the development of one apartment building with associated amenities. The site address is six thirtieth street in the sixth ward at no cost to the city.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Any discussion? Sorry. Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Affirmative recommendation. Bill eighteen fifty.
And Bill eighteen fifty, resolution adopting the plan revision to the city of Pittsburgh's official sewage facilities plan for the twenty-nine twenty-nine Smallman Street project, which will involve the development of one apartment building with associated amenities. The site address is twenty-nine twenty-nine Smallman Street in the sixth ward, no cost to the city.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Any session? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Affirmative recommendation. That takes us back to, uh, Public Safety and Wellness Committee chaired by Councilman Coghill. Bill eighteen forty-four is still on the table. And I don't see anyone having joined us.
I got a message that there, the people who can speak to this are currently in meetings. I can follow up after in between now and the final vote. Thank you.
Okay. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Affirmative recommendation. That exhausts our agenda for today. We do have meeting announcements. Next week, council will hold its regular meeting on Tuesday, September twelfth at ten a.m. and the standing committee on Wednesday, September thirteenth at ten a.m. respectively. The speaker registration will close at nine a.m. the day of the meetings. To register to speak, please fill out the sign-up form on the council meeting webpage or call the clerk's office at four one two two five five twenty-one thirty-eight. Also on Tuesday, September twelfth, council will hold an executive session at one p.m. as relates to Bill eighteen thirty-three. Also on Tuesday, September twelfth, council will hold a briefing on the comprehensive citywide plan with the first session being at two p.m. and the second session at three p.m. Councilman Warwick?
Is there a public hearing tomorrow? I have one on my calendar. All right. All right.
This one, Bill two thousand twenty-three thirteen ninety-three. It's on the get-go, proposed for Homewood.
Thank you. Anything else from members? If not, motion to excuse the absent members, approve the minutes and adjourn the meeting.
So moved. Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
We are adjourned.